Good morning. I called order the October 27, 2020, meeting of the Sling County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I ask you please stand, join me in a flag salute, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the citizens' input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Oh, you come forward. Your name and address, please.
Dave Smith, 498 North Headville Road. The title of this is "You Build It, We Will Fill It." This saying applies to jails as well as cattle barns and storage sheds. Out of the 90 million requested for a bigger barn, couldn't one or two million be actually allocated for changing lives? Chuck Colson started prison fellowship several years ago. Has had major success in reforming lives and reducing recidivism. The Ellsworth Prison has some effective programs that could be copied as well. Just building a bigger jail will only facilitate wasting more lives if serious reformation isn't a major part of the package. Another saying applies here: no pain, no gain. I witnessed a man trying to walk, talk deputies into letting him in the jail. It was cold outside. He likely needed medical attention. And the rescue mission had, quote, "too many rules." Excuse me. Pain is one of God's many gifts to tell us to do something different. Just building a bigger jail might reduce the pain on commissioners but increase it on the taxpayers who, considering state income tax, property tax, sales tax, are about at the top of the list. For the person who's been in jail a time or two, jail isn't much of a deterrent to repeating the offense. Three hot meals a day, including special expensive ones if you say the right words. Warm in winter, cool in summer, free TV entertainment, free medical care, and no responsibility. The words "reform" and "correction" need to be more than just titles or we will only be compounding our problem by building a bigger jail.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. And today's consent agenda is for the approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of counts payable on payroll, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from this, today's agenda?
Nope.
Hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand as approved. We will move to the action items. Item number one.
RFA number 241-20, Virtual Desktop Infrastructure Project. Brad Bowers, Computer Technology Director.
Good morning, Mr. Bowers.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Sling County Information Technology requested funding through the coronavirus relief funding mechanism for what we call a virtual desktop infrastructure, VDI, project. The VDI project will aid the Sling County workforce to connect to county network resources remotely in the event that COVID-19 or any other disaster requires massive work-from-home orders. As a result, we received three quotes from vendors for the VDI project. All three quotes included hardware, software, and some installation services. As indicated in the table below, the amount requested from the coronavirus relief fund for this project was $50,000. Eagle Incorporated came in at $49,000 for this project. Scale, working with WCCIT, came in at $49,701.78. And the Dell VX Rail Solution came in at $192,339.32. The commission can approve the request as presented or you can send us back for more research on this project. We recommend selecting the quote from Eagle Incorporated and the amount of $49,000, as they had the low quote for this project. Included in that quote, included what they will be providing us, are two DL-380 HP servers. They will be providing a Nimble Storage Storage Area Network device, VMware licensing, and we will also be receiving from them a network switch in order to be able to connect everything. Virtual desktop means that we publish desktops through VMware. And that's how our users would interact with our network resources. As I said, this project, we requested funding from the coronavirus relief fund in the amount of $50,000.
All right. Are there questions from commissioners?
And that does include the software and everything to take care of the security issues and everything else, I mean, out there in the...
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And is this the local company, this Eagle Incorporated?
Eagle Incorporated is a local company. They've been a very valuable resource to Sling County.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's all I have, sir. Brad, will this be a one-year time or is this a one-time cost? Where do we go from there? Does this run out, whatever?
There will be some maintenance costs, some ongoing maintenance costs for the VMware software. The hardware that we have in, the servers have a three-year warranty on them, so there will be no ongoing maintenance costs on the servers. The Nimble Storage Device will also have a maintenance cost associated with it. Let me see, what is that? $1,620.09 per year for maintenance on the Nimble Storage Device.
And that would come from your regular operating budget?
Correct.
Further questions from commissioners, comments, or any public comment? I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the purchase from Eagle Incorporated for the VDI project in the amount of $49,000 as presented by staff.
Second motion. It's been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 241-20, Virtual Desktop Infrastructure Project. Are there further comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number two.
RFA number 244-20, Resolution 20-2309, 2021-2023 Sheriff's Office Work Agreement and Salary Memorandum of Understanding for both bargaining units. Marilyn Lamer, Human Resources Director.
Good morning, Mrs. Lamer.
Good morning, commissioners. The Sling County Association of Public Employees, or otherwise known as SCAPE, and the Sheriff's Office Bargaining Unit have met and conferred earlier in this year with the county pursuant to our organizational policy. And today, we're bringing before you documents requesting approval for the following. The first is the Sheriff's Office Bargaining Unit for the 2021-2023 Work Agreement. A memorandum of understanding for the Sheriff's Office Bargaining Unit for a 1% pay plan adjustment for '21. And a one-time $500 additional salary payment payable on December 4, 2021. And then a memorandum of understanding for SCAPE with the same salary adjustments there. The alternatives for action is to sign the memorandums of understanding and the work agreement or do not sign those. The recommendation is to go ahead and sign those. That will be in effect for 2021. The 1% pay plan adjustment will result in additional approximately $130,000 in salaries and about $26,000 in employee benefits and employment taxes. And that was already included in the 2021 budget process. An additional $500 additional payment in December will result in an additional $164,000 in salaries and $35,000 in benefits. The funding for that, we estimated a little bit high on our insurance renewal. We were very fortunate that it came in as a flat renewal. And so, using those funds that were set aside to fund this. The reason that we recommended the $500 flat pay adjustment versus an adjustment to the pay plan, it does reduce some additional costs moving forward. If that was actually an adjustment to the pay plan, you have that compounding issue that we may or may not be able to fund in the future.
Questions or comments from commissioners?
One question, Marilyn. Maybe you can, I think you said it and I just didn't catch it. The $500 additional salary payment, that's a one-time payment in 2021, correct?
Right. It's a one-time thing.
It doesn't adjust the salary schedule at all?
Correct. Correct.
Marilyn, you've been working on this project a long time. Is this the normal amount of time it takes or does this seem like it's...
COVID, of course, has delayed it. Normally, we would have had some in-person meetings. Workload is another thing that has delayed it a little bit, too. We did finish our negotiations some time back and it's just been an amount of time to get the work agreement updated and get the documents before you.
It sounds like it's going to get approved, we hope, and thanks for all your work.
Thanks.
Other comments from commissioners? Marilyn, I kind of want to get at the numbers just a little bit. You've got $130,000, $26,000, $164,000, and then $35,000. So I assume those first three numbers are, you total those up and then take the $35,000 away and that's what it's going to cost the county. The bottom line is it's going to cost the county somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000 to fund this. Is that correct? A little short of that, maybe?
Well, a little bit more than that. It would be the $130,000, the $26,000, $164,000, and the $35,000. It would be all of those together.
But the $35,000 comes off, doesn't it? Isn't that a savings that we're, is that how we're funding that or is...
The $164,000 and the $35,000 for the one-time $500 payment, that's being funded by the monies that were set aside for what we projected to be a higher insurance renewal.
Okay.
But we were very, very lucky to come in with a flat renewal on that. And so, just diverting those monies to this.
It's still going to cost the county that $35,000. We had it in health insurance over here. We were able to save on the health insurance and we gave it and put it into salaries.
Yes.
Basically, is what it amounts to. So probably, then that takes it back up around $350,000 for, this is what it's going to cost the county for just the wages this year.
Right.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments, commissioners? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 20-2309 and sign the memorandum of understanding as presented by staff.
Second motion. It's been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 244-20, Resolution 20-2309, 2021-2023 Sheriff's Office Work Agreement and Salary MOUs for both bargaining units. Is there further comments? Not? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five zero. We'll move to item number three.
RFA number 245-20, Ratification of Alternate Representative K-Work 2020 Annual Meeting. Marilyn Lamer, Human Resources Director.
Good morning again, Marilyn.
Good morning again. K-Work is our workers' compensation pool that we are a part of. And they do have an annual meeting that aligns with the Kansas Association of Counties Annual Conference. They did a Zoom meeting on October 14. And this request is to ratify Jamie Doss, County Clerk, as an alternate representative that appeared for Sling County. Options will be to sign the ratification of an alternate representative or do not sign that. And the recommendation is to sign that. There were two county commissioners that were listed as both the delegate, the voting delegate, and an alternate. K-Work was unable to identify if one of the commissioners was on there. Some individuals showed on their Zoom meeting under their name and some showed as a phone number, so they were having difficulty. They were able to identify Jamie as participating in that, so that's the reason for this.
Those difficulties were with other counties commissioners or Sling County?
With Sling County. K-Work was not able to identify if our county commissioners were on there or not.
Well, that's certainly something that we should work on in the future to not let something like that happen.
I did participate. I watched the meeting as well. And I did notice that there were some people that were reflected on there with a phone number, so that probably meant it...
Okay. This goes back to the KAC meeting?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Probably had a difficult time identifying if that was somebody...
We've had those conversations already. Okay. Wish like we're ready for, is there any other questions or comments from commissioners? Any public comment? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we sign the ratification of alternate representative.
I second the motion. It's been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 245-20, Ratification of Alternate Representative for K-Work 2020 Annual Meeting. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries. Item number four.
RFA number 242-20, Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant. Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Ms. Barkley.
Good morning. How are you guys?
Good morning.
So I'm here to request a modification for a grant that I received approval on back in February, much like everybody else, due to COVID. The training that we had planned for a drug IQ class, which was going to be our regional training that we offered, has been canceled. So we are now requesting that we modify the statement of work for the project to include purchasing of a trained derailment equipment so we can practice exercises for trained derailment for hazardous materials. It would simulate a chlorine leak. It would also simulate some other gases that we have identified that the regional hazmat team should probably continue to train on.
Okay. Questions or comments from commissioners, please?
This equipment, where will it be housed? Who will have...
Salina Fire Department.
They'll have ownership of it?
Well, they'll house it just because they also house the regional hazmat training equipment.
Okay. These are props that allow you to do a scenario correctly?
Correct.
Okay. And I suppose they go into a state-type of inventory where other regions can use it or...
Correct. Yes.
Further comments? Any questions from commissioners? Any public comment? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the modifications for the 2020 HMEP grant as presented by staff.
I second the motion. It's been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 242-20, Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant. Further comments? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. The motion does carry. We'll move to item number five.
RFA number 243-20, K-State and Kansas Department of Emergency Management Sheltering Memorandum of Understanding. Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning again, Michelle.
Hello. So, since August, emergency management has been providing non-congregate COVID sheltering to Sling County. Just in the past month, we've expanded that regionally, which is how the Kansas Division of Emergency Management has brought into this. FEMA has also changed their sheltering guidance numerous times throughout the COVID disaster. And the latest modification is to have every entity that is offering sheltering sign an agreement with the state so that the state does the public assistance paperwork for the sheltering on behalf of each entity. So the three entities in Sling County that are doing sheltering of some aspect is Kansas Wesleyan University, who has handled it all themselves. So they sign an agreement directly with the state. Sling County, which is why we signed the agreement with the state. As well as K-State Polytechnic is utilizing the facility that I had set up already for the community. And they're just doing the manning to modify and monitor their students as well as feeding their own students. So that's why they're signing the agreement with us. So their paperwork gets handed to us and we then hand that on to the state.
Michelle, how often does this have to be renewed or another memorandum of understanding occur? Is this an annual thing?
It'll review for this every 30 days.
30 days?
Correct. Because every shelter that the state has, they've decided to do a 30-day agreement and then every 15 days, they decide if they would like to renew it. So this would be something that if we're still sheltering in Sling County, it would just automatically roll over for another 15 days. And then we'd just continue to look at it if there's still a need in Sling County.
And Kansas Wesleyan, you said, has decided to do their own directly through the state?
Correct.
How does that affect us at all, or if at all?
Not necessarily any effect to us. They just decided that Webster Conference Center didn't meet the needs that they had for their students. It was a little too far out of the city for them. So they decided that they were going to take the expense on themselves. And by doing that, they just ended up signing directly with the state. Since they are also included in our hazard mitigation plan, they are their own entity that is able to receive public assistance during a disaster.
I see. Are there further questions or comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment regarding this RFA? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the MOU as presented by staff.
Second motion. It has been moved and seconded. We approve RFA 243-20, K-State and KDEM Sheltering MOU. All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five zero. We'll move to item number six.
RFA number 246-20, Sale of Unit 713 for RFD Number 7. Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Morning, Ms. Stanbaugh. Sorry, Hannah.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of Rural Fire District Number 7 who is requesting authorization to sell one of their pieces of apparatus, which is unit number 713, a 1997 Ford F-700 that has a 1,000-gallon tank. This truck will first be offered for purchase to the other Rural Fire Districts in Sling County as the first option. However, if any of the other districts are not interested, they are requesting for sale by sealed bid with a minimum purchase price of $30,000. Your alternatives are for the authorization of selling the equipment or not authorizing the sale of the equipment. This particular apparatus has been replaced with different pieces of equipment to better suit the needs of Rural Fire District Number 7. So this particular piece of apparatus is no longer needed by the district. Any of the proceeds for the sale of this vehicle would be deposited into Fire District Number 7's Special Equipment Fund.
Questions from commissioners, comments?
One question, Hannah. If another fire district is interested in this unit, do they have to meet that $30,000 minimum bid purchase for...
That is correct. That is the minimum purchase price that Fire District 7 has set.
And why, do you know why that they feel that this piece of apparatus has not meet their demands but feel like it will meet another Rural Fire District's capabilities?
Yeah. That's a really good question. I'm going to try to answer it as best as I possibly can. So Fire District Number 7 obviously is made up a little bit differently than some of the other districts. Their particular, this particular piece of equipment has been replaced with something that's a little bit more efficient for the needs of responses in their district. Fully well knowing, there's several other of the districts that have probably not as much of capabilities as far as water resources go. Fire District 7 is actually pretty darn close to some of the fire hydrants and water resources in their response area versus maybe like District 1, that is a little bit more of the agricultural land, but further away from water resources, except... land, but further away from water resources, et cetera. So there's this particular piece, it's really all about the water capacity for a response to a fire call.
Okay. Thank you. Hannah, assuming that no other fire district chooses to spend $30,000, and it gets opened up to the public, and the $30,000 still isn't met, do they have a plan of action?
Well, that's probably what we would do is come back and ask. That's something that they could discuss, too, is if they would accept lower than that particular price. They've done their research. They have priced out this particular piece of equipment with all of the accessories and everything, and feel that $30,000 is an appropriate price to start off with.
Okay, well, hopefully they'll be able to get that. So are there any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Let's say that the Expo was interested in this unit as a watering tank or something for their use. They aren't a rural fire district, so they couldn't come up with that money's there. They'd have to go to the sealed bid, and they could possibly lose out on it, so it would leave the county, correct?
Our particular policy in regards to disposition of equipment and disposal of equipment has the option for the sealed bid, I think in this, but it does not specifically state that we have to offer it to the rural fire districts first. That's just kind of a common courtesy thing. If you guys really would like to include other Celine County entities, such as Expo or Roden Bridge, to be included in that, that is perfectly your prerogative to do so.
I have no problem with it. It's set up to be used as a rural fire department unit, and I understand that. If we have no interest there, I would sure like to see it, if it could be and should be utilized within the county, that it stay here, since it was county tax dollars that purchased it. That's my only thought.
Yeah, again, there's nothing in policy that says it has to be offered up to Celine County entities first. This is just kind of that common courtesy that the fire district would like to do for the rural fire districts, but I don't see that there would be any reason as to why that, if that was the direction the commission wanted to impose, that we could include other Celine County entities in there.
Commissioner Weiss, I appreciate your observations there, and it's an avenue that I hadn't thought of. Certainly Roden Bridge and/or Expo may well indeed be interested in this piece of property. I do go along with Hannah in the common courtesy that we offer it to another Celine County fire district first. And if none of them have interest, then we can either open it up, or we can simply offer the money. I don't know that we really have to open up for bids after that, if the county would want to buy that, but it might be something we should do for the purpose of the best use of our money.
Correct.
But I certainly, I certainly want the other entities to have a crack at it, if there is a need for that vehicle, you know, that truck. Is it over-equipped for what they might want to do? Probably. But dollar for dollar, it might be worth it. So we'll cross that bridge when we come to it, I guess. Okay, any other comments from commissioners? Any comments from the public? Bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chair, would that mean that we need to put that in a motion, or is that just understood?
I think it's understood.
I think you would want to amend the proposed motion if you want to be that specific about first the rural fire districts, then the county, then sealed bid.
Mr. Weiss, I'll let you make the motion, since it was kind of your idea. If you, I don't want to paraphrase your words, so.
And I hope, I hope we're on the right track here.
Well, I mean, as simple as, probably, that being said, it's a three-step approach to the, to the motion, and the rural fire districts, county, then general sale.
Yeah, the actual action being asked doesn't even touch on any of them, but it is part of the RFA, so Mr. Chairman will give this a shot. I authorize RFD Number 7 to sell the equipment as presented, with the first offering going to Celine County rural fire districts, second offer being any other Celine County entity, and third, a sealed public bid.
As a public, correct. I think that would cover it, don't you, Mr. Administrator? Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 24. I got a question, I guess, then. Now, does that 24620 RFA still pertain to that motion, being that it actually says something different on the RFA?
Yeah, you're approving RFA 246-20 with the amendments as noted.
With the amendments, okay. Yes, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 246-20 for the sale of Unit 713, RFD Number 7, and with the proposed amendments attached. Further comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Hannah. We will move to, I guess that's the end of our, of our action items. We'll move to informational items. Item number one.
Emergency Management Update. Michelle Barkley, Director.
Michelle, good morning again.
Hello again. So I'll keep it short, because not much has really happened besides continuing COVID. So we are on day 229. I have a countdown in my office. In the main scheme of what we have been accomplishing is sheltering. We've done PPE for first responders, public entities, private entities, as well as the county. I have a semi-truck that showed up yesterday and another one today using the CRF funds, so we've got election cleaning supplies, we've got wipes, disinfectant, hand sanitizer. So I and Bernie will be running around delivering that today. We've done testing supplies, public assistance, a lot of planning meetings with our educational partners, as well as first responders, trying to educate them, and CRF. And I turned it off. So we have sheltering now at the Webster Conference Center, as well as the Best Western. I never thought I would say it, but we are starting to exceed the capacity that we can at Webster due to some of the events that they have going on still. So it depends on the weekend or what they've got going on, the number of rooms that we have available. So we've had to be flexible with that. We've requested PPE testing supplies and contract investigators from the state. CRF, we have done the advisory committee, as well as the PPE project and the EOC enhancement grant, which we purchased laptops with. And then for public assistance, I just want to remind everybody that it is a 75% reimbursement from the federal government. It'll be 10% put in from the state, and the remainder is what we end up having to cover. It is only going to cover category B expenses, which is personal protective measures. And then our planning meetings have been state briefings, local partners' meetings with schools, hospitals, public health, and private entities. So a breakdown of our PPE, as you can see in the blue and green, are mostly masks. The rest are testing supplies, gloves, and contact investigators. So in total, we have requested 2,500 kits for testing, and we see that continuing to come in, now with the nursing homes having to have their CMS testing requirement. We have a total of 179 cases of PPE that has come from the state. That does not include the stuff that came from the CRF funds. And then as a grand total of 2,679 boxes that have taken up my office. In the meantime, we've also been doing a lot of grant opportunities, since there's been an abundant amount of them. Our typical ones that we normally do, non-COVID times, is the Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Grant, and then the Emergency Management Preparedness Grant. The CRF grants, we have done the county PPE project, as well as the EOC enhancement grant. And then Rural Fire is still plugging away. They, in this last quarter, have had 152 calls for service, 91 fire calls, and 61 medical calls.
Michelle, and perhaps you've touched on, I didn't catch it, but the sheltering locations within Celine County, and there are 35 people sheltered currently, or that's an ongoing number?
That was when I wrote this, so since then I've added six more.
So there were 35 people in shelter at that time?
That have been sheltered.
That have been sheltered.
So some of them are being sheltered, whether they are showing two or more symptoms, and then they get tested and they need to quarantine while they wait test results. I'll take them for a period of three to five days. If you're quarantined and you've got the 14-day stint, I'll take you. If you've got the 10-day, I'll also take you. Or if you, I've had some minors, and I don't, I don't take anyone under 18 without parental supervision, so I may take a parent or an older sibling in, so they can watch the minor.
So all 35, though, have been COVID-related?
Correct.
I see. That's pretty impressive for us to be able to do that often, help, help those that need help. So are there any other further comments from commissioners? Questions from Michelle? Thank you for doing an excellent job in a very difficult time in our history. So thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number two.
Annual Treasurers Report. Jim DeVois, County Treasurer.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning, Commissioners. I wanted to go over kind of an outline of funds in our tax abstract. I did this last year, too, just to kind of give you an idea of how much money we have in our funds and what we have for investments already. This was report, it was done as of October 19th, so those figures do change on a daily basis. So if you go to page one, years ago, when I first came on, we got rid of the US Treasury bills, and there was really a couple of different reasons for it. Number one, it went to complete online, and I don't want to invest any of the county's money completely online, or online. I felt very uncomfortable with that process, plus interest rates were not that good anyways. Bank accounts, we have six bank accounts. The Bank of Tuskegee, Citizen State Bank, American State Bank, Bennington, which is our main bank account, Bank Six and Central National Banks. I do want to point out that none of our banks charge us a fee in there, which is really good. So I always remember coming on, and we were paying roughly $1,300 a month in bank fees, and that was just, at least in my mind, money that we were just kind of throwing away. So it makes me do, feel pretty good that we're, that we're at this point. And the interest rates, the current money market rate is still at a .20, but interest rates that we've been able to get on our investments and working with the county administrator and in our office, the low end is a .61, and the high end is a 2.93, which is really pretty good, so the mean is around a 2.0. So I do feel pretty good about our interest rates. Just wish things were a little bit better, and we were bringing in a lot more money. I think last year I said it sure would be nice to hit that million-dollar mark. I think we're going to be, have to work on that a lot more before that ever happens. So as of this report, in our bank accounts, as of the 19th, we have $39,069.53. Just because I wanted to see a comparison, last year at this time, we had $28,247.26 in the bank, and I think a lot of that difference in the money comes from distributions. We do do a distribution on the 20th of October, so to all the taxing entities, which is our final distribution. Certificates of deposit, we have $8,700,000 compared to last year, which we had $8,650,000. And they, they do kind of vary in there. Some of the banks, we have maybe three, like Bank Six, we have three separate certificates of deposit. Bank of Tuskegee, we have three, and it kind of goes on down the line there. So we stay on top of that. We put everything out for bid. So I don't believe in playing favorites with any bank. We take a look, we go out, we, I send emails out to, or our office sends emails out to every bank, and whoever has the highest bid, it's going to be the best for the county, is the way that we look at it.
Are all of your CDs typically a specific length of time, term?
Yeah, the smaller ones, I may go, I believe in laddering, because the county has to remain fluid.
Right.
So when I say laddering, we can go from 12, 18 to two years, two years as to max by statute, that we can go up to. And the ones that I go two years are a million-plus in there. So that way, as we look at the laddering, if something, the bottom were to fall out, the commissioners were to come back and say, hey, where can we start pulling money from? At least we could take a look at the list and see where we're close, and see what we could do, and kind of go from there. Let's hope that never happens. Okay? We have no money in the municipal investment pool, and the only reason we keep the MIP going is at the end of the year, the banks like for us, since they insure, they pay for the insurance for our money that's in the accounts, the banks like for us to at least shift it for at least two to three days, until after that period goes on from the end of the year to the first of the year, and then we just bring it right back in, and we still get interest rates from the municipal investment pool. But right now, we don't have any funds in there at all. So our total county funds as of October 19th was $47,722 compared to $36,903 from last year on there. Any questions on those?
Mr. Administrator, Phil, I would like to know, with our total number of funds versus where we're supposed to be at, you know, in reserve, percentage-wise of our assets and so forth, how does that stack up? Are we, I assume we're in good shape? If you understand my question, I hope.
We are in good shape. It's a little bit apples and oranges, because what Jim's talking about is the total amount of funds, which are not all our funds. They include, as he said, funds that we're holding pending distribution to other entities. So what you're referring to is specifically the county-held funds, which we typically evaluate at the end of the fiscal year. So it's a little bit apples and oranges, but yes, we are in, continue to be in very good shape in terms of our reserves.
Okay. And I will say, I like the, the sound of that 2.93 that you were getting somewhere, so.
Yeah, I wish they were all 2.93. I'd be happy. Very quickly, and I know that you've seen some of these numbers before, but I looked at the 2019 tax abstract, and I put that on there already. Our certified tax abstract for 2019 was $81,166,228 compared to last year, which was $77,130,000. So I'm not sure why the difference is in there, but they look at the general tax, the special assessments in lieu of tax, and different things that they put down. I broke down everything for you by agency. I'm not going to go through all of that, but I'm just happy that the numbers match and go from there. The, if you turn to the last page, and I just wanted to put this in there, and the things that always kind of bother me are delinquencies, and the total number of collections in there, I think we're pretty close to 98%, but 97.7, 97.64, somewhere in there. Percentage of delinquencies to date, we were 2.38, which is still pretty good. Unpaid taxes, $1,869,000, despite everything that's going on with the economy and different entities. We have to take a look at those things compared to last year, which was 1.88 in there. So I am also currently working with the clerk on publication of levy. I know she's still waiting for information from McPherson County-
Just got it yesterday.
Good, good, and from- Good, good, and from USD 306, I believe it was. So hopefully, we can get that, and I can get that published in the newspaper and go from there. I really kind of pride ourselves on getting the tax statements out before Thanksgiving, and that's my hope this year, too, is to get tax statements out before Thanksgiving and go from there. So having said all that, do you have any questions for me?
I don't have a question necessarily, but I'll use my microphone time to give my opinion on something, and that is the delinquent outstanding taxes that some people choose to purposely delay to one year, two year, three year, before they have to pay it, before they have their sale. And the publication of that, the cost of the publication to the county that has to occur to make that happen is in the tens of thousands of dollars. And I mean, I've heard it, and I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000 every time we publish it. I might be a little off on that number there, a little bit, but it costs the county a lot of money for those people to think they're just purposely defeating the county or whoever it is that they're trying to hold off on. And it actually, it makes everything else go up, so that's my opinion.
If you recall, and I don't know why I'm going to say this, but I am, but if you recall, I did take kind of a beating, because I figured it out, at least for a little over 10 years, the county was spending a little over $1 million in mandated publications. I went to the legislature, and I asked them to, at least for transparency-wise, why can't we just put it on our website? It'd be 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. They could print, publish, look, all they want, instead of putting it in newspaper. And I got a little bit beat up by the lobbyist, the newspaper lobbyist. Not a little bit beat up, I got beat up a lot, but I still do believe that way. I still believe that, you know, we've got to be good fiscal managers, and that's, if you think about a million dollars, what can that be applicable to with the county? Where could we use an additional million dollars? And I think of services that we have and the different things, so.
That's an interesting viewpoint, and perhaps we can, you know, when the election's all over, I'm assuming we're going to have some new leaders in Topeka, from the local level anyway, and I think we need to work on them from that viewpoint. Those are good points, Jim. So, other comments or questions from commissioners regarding Mr. DeVois's report?
Good job.
Okay.
None, so thank you for the information.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We'll move to item number three.
Department of Senior Services Update. Rosie Walter, Director.
Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning, Commissioners. This reporting period is from July 2020 through September 2020 for my quarterly update. The accomplishments, the City of Salina, the Community Development Block Grant for the Coronavirus Meal Program. Originally, we applied for $10,000 to supplement the Meals on Wheels program, and these are funds that are over and above what we had allotted in the budget. Sent in the application, heard back from them. Apparently, nobody else applied for any of the funding, and they asked me if I would go ahead and apply for the $35,000, and I did. So, and we were able to prove that we are 20% up above, or 47,000 above what our budget allowed for just the Meals on Wheels program. Under the CARES Act funding, we got the kiosk system, one of the things that we purchased or asked for approval from, is the kiosk system, and it allows me to check in seniors and volunteers or anybody that comes into the building. You know, currently, now, we're writing down their name. They're writing down what they're there for, the time they come in and the time that they leave. This is going to eliminate all of that. Each person's going to have a card. They can scan that card. It'll bring up their profile. They can select if they're there for lunch, or wood carving, or pool playing, sewing, whatever it may be. It also is up in the cloud, and I can pull all this information and have all of my stats right there. Very excited. We have had three trainings. We have it up and running, so I'm hoping we can get it going yet this week. Meals for the County in Service, senior services made up about 228 boxed meals for the County in Service Day, including a sandwich, a bottle of water, chips, and potato salad, and all your condiments. So a lot of work, but it went very, very smoothly. Convoy of Hope, this year on August 25th, we participated in the Convoy of Hope. It is the local farmers in Missouri, in Kansas, donate a lot of produce, included everything from fresh tomatoes, grapes, potatoes. It was about a 40-pound box, just a large box. We actually received about 280. We did all of our Meals on Wheels and all of our walk-ins. So in that one day, we got rid of every single box. And then the Salina shares, who also partnered with a food bank, they had over 300, and they had a drive-through, and they got rid of all of their boxes within 35 minutes. So, and it was a crazy day, but they're going to do it again in November, so I'm really anxious to see what's going to be in those boxes. Hopefully, they get it in November. Meals on, the plans, Meals on Wheels for Pets, it sounds kind of funny, but I've met with the Friends of the Animal Shelter, and we want to partner and look at all of our friends of our shut-ins. And when I'm friends, I mean their pets, their cats, their dogs, that are not getting the care that they may need. So with the Friends of the Animal Shelter, they're going to provide all of their health care for their animals by application. I have sent out a survey to all of my Meals on Wheels recipients. I've had about 10 people respond. I've sent them applications from Friends of the Animal Shelter. So right now, we're just in the planning stages. I mean, it could be we deliver meals or pet food once a month to all the different pets. So just getting started. We don't know where it's going to go, but I'll keep you updated. Talked with Arts and Humanities, and there's a statue that I would like to put over on the Ninth Street side of the building and the lawn. I haven't heard anything back from them, but I will keep you updated. It's just farmer and his dog, so it's a bronze statue. Right now, I'm, we're going to go work with the, our advisory committee. It's a group off of our regular full committee. We're going to start looking at all the different grants that, for the building that we want to continue on with. The whole grant cycle for our last renovation is complete. Some of the things that I'm looking at is replacing the windows, replacing, well, not replacing the outbuilding, but the old boiler room outside houses all of our lawn equipment, all of our recycling. It's falling apart. The roof leaks terrible. The floor is about rotted away, and there's asbestos, because there's a basement in it, and there's asbestos in it. So I want to look at that and see what we can do to save that building. It is a little historic building. It has some markers on it outside. And the other thing I want to look at is a Meals on Wheels drive-through for our volunteers and all of our deliveries. As you guys know, my parking lot is very, very congested about 10:30, when I have patrons coming in, and I also have all the volunteers coming in to pick up their meals. They think they're going to be two minutes. They end up being 10 minutes, and they're parked behind my other patrons, so. On my budget update, I went ahead and I did January through September for 2019, 2020. You can see the numbers there. We are about $23,194.68 short in our revenue, but of course, that's due to the COVID and shutting up the building, and actually could be a lot higher. I think it's not, because our Meals on Wheels just exploded. Expenses were about $20,277.33 below what we expended last year at the same time. And again, that's probably due to the COVID. Our average daily population, we are about 23 lower than we are at the same time last year in our average daily population, and that's including everything. It could be, that could definitely be a lot worse. I mean, our Meals on Wheels definitely kept that number up. But, and our numbers in the dining room are slowly but surely coming up, coming up. So when we first opened, it was about 35 back in June. Right now, I think our average is about 68.
Rosie, I've got a couple, three questions here. The Medicare thing that goes on right now, enrollment and so forth, that we, not we, but we provide space for those who help the seniors. I assume that that is going to happen or is in progress right now?
It is happening right now. It's SIC, and it's, yeah. They go through it from October to December 9th is the enrollment period. We have received a lot of phone calls. We're actually not going to do it in the building this year. K-State Extension and Research Office is taking all those phone calls, so we're just referring them to their, and the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging. So we give them both numbers, let them call and make an appointment, and they're doing it over the phone.
Okay.
Received probably 30 phone calls a day.
My second question regards the drive-through, the circle drive that we're talking about, and I'm very much in favor of that, but there is a pretty good-sized hurdle there, I see, that we haven't really ever talked to anyone about, and that is city codes, whether we can curb cut, how we're going to do that. Before we get too far involved, we need to find out from the city exactly what we're up against, or what they're going to allow for a curb cut, take away off-street parking, or on-street parking, I should say, those types of things, although I'm very much in favor of doing that. The last thing, your idea here for Meals on Wheels for Pets, I'd like to certainly see some pretty definitive plans and/or numbers before we commit to something like that.
As we progress, I'll let you know.
Yeah, I mean, what are we going to provide? How much does it cost? You know, is this a dollar per pet? You know, whatever. I mean, I just want to, I'd like to see some definitive numbers.
Right now, it's not, it won't cost the county anything. It'll all be provided by Friends of the Animal Shelter.
Those are the kinds of things that, when I put my vote on it and say, let's do it, that I'd like to see, so.
Okay. All right, our grants.
Further comments from commissioners?
Yes, I'd like to jump on that question that you just asked. It's like that there, when you said something about you would be making those deliveries maybe once a month, is it, you mean?
Volunteers.
Oh, volunteers will do that at the same time, that they're delivering their meals on wheels?
Exactly, yes.
That they'll take their pet food? Okay, oh, gotcha. Thank you.
I had one thought that Rosie made at our advisory meeting, is the fact that these, some of these individuals who have a pet in their home and are receiving the Meals on Wheels, you can almost be assured that the puppy is getting fed. It might be also the claim of that individual, but.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I think one point that Rosie brought up at the advisory meeting was the fact that these meals that are being delivered, Meals on Wheels, that people with pets are seeing to the care of their, to their pets, even if it comes at the cost of coming off of their own plate and feeding.
Exactly. They're not going to live their best for hunger.
Don't misunderstand me. I'm very pro-pet, pro-animal rights, and, I mean, and seniors particularly that have a pet in their home, I mean, that's more than a pet to them. That's a family member, and, I mean, you know, I mean, I get all that. I just, from an organizational and a budget process, I mean, that's what I want to see. I'm not saying I'm against this at all, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And come up with a definition of pets, would you?
Could be anything, snakes.
My wife's got a horse and a goat, so I'm sitting there thinking, they're pets? Come on now.
Horses, I don't know. Cats and dogs, I'd say.
Okay.
So, any other questions or comments from commissioners? Rosie, thank you very much for your report.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number four.
Community Development Block Grant, COVID Grant, Application Reviews. Hannah Stanbaugh, Deputy County Administrator.
Good morning again, Hannah.
Good morning, Commissioners. Now, this is a little bit of discussion that I would like to have with you in regards to providing staff with what the desired recommendations are for reviewing applications in regards to the amount, to the grant, the Community Development Block Grant, Coronavirus Funds that the county received. Back in July, we were notified that we were, that we were awarded a grant in the amount of $132,000, and the purpose of this particular grant was to provide financial assistance and to help those for-profit businesses in our community that were faced with financial difficulties due to COVID-19, to specifically retain jobs for low-to-moderate-income families. We solicited for grant applications, and we took those until the 18th of September, and we received a total of 12 applications. And every single one of those applications met the prequalifications in regards to meeting the retention of jobs for low-to-moderate-income families. And basically, we took all of those 12 grant applications, and with maximum eligibility, they, the totals was 291,250. So we're in a good position in the aspect of we've got more applications than we have grant dollars. So we discussed this with the North Central Regional Planning Commission, as they are the ones that are doing our grant administration for this particular program. They do have their fees, and that is about $12,000. So we've got a total of $120,000 to be able to provide grant opportunities to these particular businesses that have applied. We do have until August of 2021 to expend the grant funds. However, obviously, this is the main purpose of trying to help these businesses that have been impacted by COVID. These particular grant funds can be used for operational relief, and that can include payroll, utilities, rent, inventory, and any other monthly expenditures for that particular business. And if any of those people are awarded grant funds, they would need to provide us with copies of all of their bills and receipts, as well as proof of payment, before we could release those grant funds to them. So, like I said, since we have had more applications than available funds, it is going to be necessary for a further review of the applications and make a recommendation on determining those different grant award amounts. Several other counties and cities received the same type of grant, so I did reach out and kind of asked how they had handled this. And every single one of them that I talked to had already had an established grant review committee. And we don't necessarily have something like that here in Salina County, and so the only thing I could really attribute it to is those funds that we usually get through special alcohol or special parks and recreation, that usually, we ask for volunteers from the commission for a review of those applications and provide recommendations for award amounts. But I wanted to provide you with a couple of different ways that we could look at the, this particular pot of money that we have to be able to provide funds. There's, the first option could be ranking the applications, providing maximum eligibility until all of those funds are expended. So let's say we've got the 12 applications, but the top five, and that's who we provide those particular funds to. We could certainly take the whole $120,000 that we have to award and divide it equally among those 12 applicants. We could certainly rank the applications and provide maximum eligibility to the businesses that are intended to retain the most jobs for those low-to-moderate-income employees. We can certainly use grant grading systems to rank the applications, to determine awards, or of course, any other alternative that is there. In your particular agenda packet, you were provided a list of the businesses that had submitted their application, and then also what their maximum eligibility, maximum dollar amount, as to what they are eligible for. And then also, and I apologize, it was confusing, because it's just the way I think that it was laid out, but I had also included a copy of a, an example of a scoring sheet that their community had used to rank and grade their applications. So I apologize if that part of it was confusing. In the end, I think really that the gist of all of this conversation piece is we've got more applications than we have money. So staff is needing some direction as to what you feel is the most appropriate, or what directions you would like for us to move forward with to try to get these grant funds out the door into these particular businesses. funds out the door into these particular businesses.
Well, Hannah, my first question comes up, when I look at these people that have applied, or these businesses, it doesn't say that it has to be a retail business, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, I mean, and I don't know exactly what the criteria is that they have to pass here, but I see one is a farm. I mean, does that mean that every farmer in Saline County would have, would have been eligible if he met the criteria?
So, yes and no. Farms are a little bit different, and what is the determining factor on that has to deal with how, what type of business they are. Are they an LLC or are they a sole proprietorship? Most of the time, the farms, farming operations are usually sole proprietorships, it just kind of depends. There's, the farm piece of it is a little sticky, but yes, to be quick on that particular answer, any farm could have applied, as long as they met the eligibility requirements. And again, the eligibility requirements are the fact that they have to retain low-to-moderate income employees. So that's, that's the big factor on that.
There's another issue here that I see, or that just raises a question to me. When you have a person or, or a family that owns multiple businesses, and those multiple businesses, although not related, apply, and I think there's three or four of them on here that fit that criteria, I don't, you know, that's something that we probably need to look at, too.
Again, that's why I am here, kind of asking for some direction.
I'm certainly not ready to vote on this without seeing the, the criteria. And, and as an example, I mean, there's one business on here that's asking for fifty thousand dollars. I mean, that's, that's a pretty significant amount out of this group, and I'd like to see how they come up with that. And I mean, I'm sure you've looked at it, but I would like to see it myself, so.
So, Mr. Chair, I mean, those are exactly the kinds of questions that we need assistance with, and so what staff is asking is, how do you want us to move forward? Would you like a couple of members of your commission to sit down with staff and review these like we do with the alcohol funds, or is there some other process? That's really what we're getting at today, is the process piece of this.
And in that process, who set the criteria when you said if they met the criteria?
So this is federal funds. So there was initial criteria that they absolutely had to meet, and the biggest one is retention of those jobs for low-to-moderate-income families.
Correct, and that's a good point. And then the county did not put any additional criteria on this?
No, sir.
So, per the rules, can the county, can we, with our discussions today, put additional criteria on this, like one per family, no elected officials, blah, blah, blah? Because that's, you know, some of the things that maybe the chamber has done with theirs?
Right, so I guess maybe that's, yes, that is, we can do that. Again, it's, every community has done it a little bit differently, and like I said, there was one community that they took their grant award amount, and they just divided equally amongst the applications that they received. Another community ranked their applications and provided maximum funding based on their scoring sheet. There's several different ways that we can do this. Just looking at the ways that the other communities have done it, it's just, again, we're in a good position, the fact that we've got more money, or more applications than we have funds, but how is it that the commission has desired to award those funds to those businesses?
What's our timeframe on this, by the way?
Again, the grant funds don't have to be expended until August of 2021. However, I will say, these particular businesses had requested, or had submitted their applications for the simple fact that this is particularly related to the impacts that COVID has had on their businesses, so.
I guess, that having been said, I, I mean, even though it's clear out to, what'd you say, August?
August of 2021.
I'd like to see us get this done by the end of the year, for certain, you know, in the next sixty days, something like that. And, and because, I mean, indeed, they are needing help, and we've got the money sitting here, why, why do we not help them? That's my first thought, but so, I would like to see us put a deadline on this somewhere, you know, right around Christmas or shortly before, the first of the year, whatever, to get this done. And, and I like your idea of forming a short committee here to, to pursue this a little further, take these, take these applications a little, apart a little bit further.
Would this be similar to the one-off that we did originally? You know, Representative Roth and Mayor Seton and that? I mean, wasn't that just a one, that was a one-time group, and that's what we promised them, so.
Yes, and that was a one-time group, and it, and it had to do with eleven million dollars, and how to dispense it, you know, education?
Right.
Business, community, I mean, county, city, et cetera. So I look at this just slightly different, but.
I guess, and then, but, but what I was mentioning, I think, about a one-off thing is, I think Hannah, you had mentioned that most counties have a permanent grant team.
Yes.
A grant review process or whatever?
Correct.
That, I've never thought of that before, and that, that makes a little bit of sense, too. Obviously, they wouldn't meet on a monthly basis, but...
Right.
Maybe once or twice a year.
And, and that's what I had kind of gathered from some of these other different counties or communities, is it's not something that happens very often, but they are also ones that tend to apply for CDBG money more on a regular basis, so it would make a little bit more sense. We don't typically, so, and again, this, this particular grant opportunity was one that we weren't necessarily expecting, so we're excited to be able to have the money, and excited for the applications that we did receive.
But I, but I understand what you're running up against right now, and if I can be, if you need some commissioners' help, I would, with the chair's approval, I would at least volunteer myself to be part of that committee, but, because I do see that, it just doesn't make sense that you do it all equally, because then whoever just asked for the most money, you know, why not just ask for a hundred thousand then, or something like that?
Right.
I mean, there's, there needs to be, similar to what the chamber did, that, you know, there was a max, and they excluded some people, just like the chair was talking about, you know, one per family, or whatever, that sort of thing, so.
And I want to get, Commissioner Weiss has a question, but I want, I want to follow up on that just quickly. And I'm looking at twelve businesses here, primarily from the same area. We're, we're dealing with a finite amount of money in businesses. I think this is something that we could get accomplished very quickly with a couple of commissioners, with an administrator, maybe an outside person. But in the long run, I really like that idea of putting together that, that, you know, the planning and zoning has its own commission, and whatever, we wanted to name this commission in the future, because this may be something that's going to be ongoing for a long time with this, this federal money and stuff. So we need to probably look at, at getting a commission like that put together, and, whether it be probably, you know, five to seven people that, that would be willing to serve on that, long-term. I mean, when I say long-term, I mean, their, their term would be, you know, say, three years, but you, you would be an ongoing thing that they would meet whenever that were needed, so. And Commissioner Weiss, you have been waiting patiently.
A couple of questions, thank you. The North Central Kansas Planning is the one that did all the work, checked all the applications and verified those and such. Is there, well, there, could there possibly be a, this is federal money, could there possibly be an audit at some point back on this? And if so, who does that fall on? If we, we let this money go, and then an audit shows that company XYZ wasn't eligible because they had some miscues in their application or whatever, who does that fall back on?
So I guess that's probably the, the beauty of this particular grant, these particular grant dollars. In order for us to even release funds to them, they have to be able to provide all of their receipts, plus prove that they have paid those receipts, and those receipts and the proof of payment has to go to the state for them to review before any of the money can be released to them. So there's a lot more checks and balances with this particular grant fund.
There's a lot more before you sign a check.
Correct, correct. Now, with the North Central Planning Commission, they are just the grant administration piece of this. But as far as who an audit would fall back on, obviously, Saline County is going to be, be a part of that. But I have very large confidence that none of these dollars will go out the door without them being double-checked, triple-checked, quadruple-checked through several different entities.
Follow-up, and going through this, this Excel spreadsheet or whatever, on the dollars of eligibility max, is that money they requested and the max they're available for, or is that because of the criteria, this is how much they could have?
It's because of the criteria. Not every, actually, one of, several of these businesses did not request the maximum amount that they are eligible for, but for privacy purposes, we had to take out what their, what the amount that they requested, and just show what they are, what their maximum amount that they're eligible for.
Do you have a total of dollars requested?
Yes, I do.
What's that amount?
Two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, just a little over two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand.
It's just about eighteen thousand less than that.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Good, good point.
And, and on this, one more. On this, you see these Xs on this chart, is that, is each, can you, can you give me just a quick explanation? Two of them had an application, the others didn't have an application? What, what is an application?
So this particular spreadsheet came through the North Central Planning Commission, and it was updated after I had submitted it. So we have applications for each single one of these. So the X is just basically a checkbox that say, "Yes, we've got it," or "Yes, that they meet those."
All of these are a criteria that you had to meet?
That is correct.
Each one of these?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and you had to meet all of them?
Yes.
Application, budget, jobs, and LMI?
That is correct.
Okay, and they all met them all?
Yes.
So actually, there's Xs through all of that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And my questions kind of add on to Commissioner Weiss's question, and that is, what is North Central Kansas Regional Planning Commission, what's their role in this? They're getting paid twelve thousand dollars to grant, for grant administration and program assistance. Then why, why can't they come up with the recommended monies to advise us?
Well, that is part of their job, so the grant administration piece is more along the lines of doing all of the paperwork for us, and following up with each one of the businesses, and taking care of making sure that they get their receipts and their proof of payments, and all of their application stuff is complete and full. But it still does lie on our jurisdiction, on our county, to make the recommendations for grant awards to each one of these businesses. The Planning Commission is, is, that's not their particular responsibility with it.
I believe you.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Yeah, I would like to, there's a pressing need out there to get money out, so I agree with your timeframe, if not even sooner, and, but I would, I guess, could you bring, before this commission decided to do a permanent task force, me not being one to add any more layers to government, but it does kind of make a little bit of sense, can you bring us back some ideas of what other communities have done, other counties have done?
Yeah, we most certainly can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just so we're not reinventing the wheel and...
Absolutely.
You know, who are those people? I mean, if we actually have to vote on this at some point, maybe it's okay that none of us are on this. I would just like some direction, I think, about what some other counties are doing.
Absolutely.
What I'd like to do here, with, with the approval of the other commissioners, is between now and next week, that perhaps you guys will grant me the ability to sit down with, with the staff a little bit, and come forward next week with a recommendation for this one-time group to approve these Saline County business CV applications, and come, come forward by next week with, with a, with a group, or, you know, three or five people, whatever it is, and, and bring that forward, and let the commissioners say, "Yeah, let's do that," or "No, let's don't," if that's okay, for this one time. Then the thing that Monty's talking about, and we all talked about a little bit, in, down the road, that we will put this group together of, whether it consists of commissioners or not, I don't know. It, it may consist of our county treasurer, as an example, you know, or someone like that, so.
If I, if I can ask, I think Commissioner Shadbrook showed an interest in, in helping this initial thing. If we could keep it to two commissioners where you could meet and not have to have all the...
Certainly, and that's something that, I mean, I, that's why I want to discuss this with, with Phil and Hannah, and, and maybe not even two commissioners, I don't know. We'll just, we'll just brainstorm a little bit between this afternoon and next Tuesday, and go from there.
So you're not bringing back a recommendation of what to do and the monies?
No, no. I'm bringing back a recommendation on who to serve.
Okay.
And, and, and have them look at this, and then attack it very quickly. I mean, a week isn't going to make any difference. I don't want to delay this seven or eight months, that's what I don't want to do.
And I'm okay with not being part of this initial just brainstorming, so.
I get that, yeah.
But, but if I can be of help later, then I'd be happy to.
Which I assume every other commissioner would be, have the same attitude, you know? So if, if, if that's okay with the other commissioners, that's going to be my recommendation, that, that I sit down with you guys one time, and we bring back a recommendation to this group on those people that'll do that for, for this one-time deal, and we'll have that done for next week. And then give it to the committee, and give them a, whether it's one week or two weeks to get it done, and bring it back, and we ship the money out. Does that sound okay with everyone?
That'll work.
Okay, that's, that'll be our plan, then.
I appreciate it very much.
And this is interesting, it's, it's an eye-opener. It, it's not just that, but I mean, it, what, there's twelve, twelve businesses here, and almost all of them are from Gypsum, Gypsum area, and then, you know, the western part of the county, or the, there's a couple from this area, but the northern part and eastern part, you know. Okay, well, let's move to item number five.
County Administrator's Update.
Mr. Phil?
Good morning again, commissioners. So just a few things for today. First, weekly update on progress on the Coronavirus Relief Funding. With your approval, in the consent calendar this morning of our accounts payable, we have now shipped, or will this afternoon, about four-point-two million, just a shade over four-point-two million, of our eleven million dollars in CRF funding out the door. That is thirty-eight and a half percent expended so far. I'd like to think that that was good, but on the state webinar yesterday, the state said, really, their goal is to, for counties to have this fifty percent expended by the end of October, which, if you think about it, we really have September, October, November, December to spend the money, so this is the halfway point. So we are continuing to work with the entities that were funded to try and encourage them to get their receipts to us as soon as possible. I am going to be meeting with our CRF Advisory Committee tomorrow afternoon, we're having another meeting. The state encouraged us to look at a backup plan. So in the event that not everybody can turn in their receipts by December thirtieth, what can we do to keep the money here locally? So we're going to be looking at both how we can encourage folks to complete the plans that they submitted to us, and also what is Plan B. The next item that I wanted to cover is, it is United Way Campaign season again, and I understand that last year, I wasn't here for the campaign, but Marilyn Leimer tells me that last year, the commission authorized some days off as prizes for people who participated in the United Way Campaign. So she has asked me to approach you with that again, and see if you would be willing to make that donation again. So then the last thing that I wanted to mention is, believe it or not, the holiday season is coming right around the corner, and so I wanted commissioners to start thinking about whether you would like to schedule a staff luncheon for the holidays again, and when you might want to do that. So I'll have... when you might want to do that. So, I'll have Linda reach out to each of you with some calendar dates, if you want to go there. But that's just a couple of questions I have for commissioners, so.
Okay. Any comments from commissioners to, for Phil? If not, we'll move to item six.
Commissioners' comments.
Anyone have anything?
Nope.
We'll move to item seven, announcements.
Announcements. Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Pardon?
I said I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Okay. Just to remind voters that today is the last day to apply for advanced ballots by mail. We have early voting, the rest of this week, till 5:00. We'll be open on Saturday from 9:00 to 4:00 for early voting, and on Monday from 8:00 to noon for early voting in our office.
Do you have an estimate on how many people have voted in person?
In person, to, as of yesterday, 2,812.
Wow.
Including advanced ballots that we get in person, and also by May, all the ballots, because we have a drop box out front. That's 8,342.
That is significant.
So, we've gotten 68% of the ballots that we've mailed out back, so.
Wow.
And that's just the mailed ballots.
Sounds great. It's a bustling place up there, that's for certain.
Mm-hmm. On Monday, the first day of early voting, we had, we had 554, and it's been averaging at least 400 to 500 a day.
Wow. Well, I too encourage everyone to exercise your right to get out and vote, and regardless of who your choice, or what your choice is, yes, no, that person, this person, get out and exercise your right. So, all right, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded the adjourned today's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.